Welcome everyone to the Douglas Plan and Board Meeting of, I don't know what today's date is, August 13th, 2025, 7:00 p.m. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast by local access program with remote participation available as provided on our agenda. I hereby call the meeting to order at 7:00 p.m. Members in attendance are Jacob Schultzberg.
Meg Schlesman.
Aaron Sokrath.
Mike DeRose.
Rich Frosting.
Mike Schrock.
Jake Kanaic.
Okay, Mr. Greco is unexcused. Mr. Marx is excused. First item on the agenda, white court A and R for Daniel Bedrosian.
Yes.
Possible votes.
So this one is, uh, this is a very straightforward.
Okay.
It's basically, it's, um, each lot contains a minimum 200 feet of frontage and 90,000 square feet of area required by the zoning bylaws, and they each possess adequate access from white court, which is a publicly maintained road.
Okay.
It's basically a reconfiguration.
Yeah, because we did some A and Rs there recently. Okay. Board, any questions, comments, concerns?
Straight forward.
Okay, seen as none, I'll detain a motion to endorse the A and R for white court as presented.
Sumo.
Me by Ms. Schlesman, secondly, Mr. Zwicker. Any further discussion?
Just one thing, in the future, we need to change our siding spots.
Take a look, there's only five spots. Okay.
We used to have it, we used to have it set up for our plans have in one area so they can be all folded in a certain spot.
The time, I think we're working on that with.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of it, I know that there was something.
That's okay, we'll keep an eye on it.
Even on this, so there's only five. We have seven member board.
Yeah, good catch.
Please.
Let's go through the chair, can they update this?
I don't think it's.
No, we only need five for.
For this time, I would recommend just kind of signing off to the side.
There's only five members here.
Just not to hold them off, yeah.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's certainly something that we'll pay attention to next time, I'll make sure they have that.
I think that, I mean, I'm going back a couple of years, but that was brought up because this used to happen a lot.
All right.
Five lines, it'd be all over the place.
All right, and a second A and R for 43 Manchog, Mark and Deb Dunleavy, possible votes.
Yeah, this one's a little bit more complex. The application proposes to create lots one, two, and three. The existing home is contained within lot two, which is the middle lot. So lot one, I'm sorry, lot one contains the existing dwelling and contains a minimum 20,000 square feet of area and 100 feet of frontage and adequate access off of Manchog Street, which is a publicly maintained roadway. Lot two, to the right there on your plan, also contains the minimum 20,000 square feet of area and 100 feet of frontage and adequate access off Manchog Street, which is a publicly maintained road. It also contains utility easement that will serve the proposed lot three in the rear, and lot three is proposed as a lot fronted, lot frontage exception lot, and it meets the criteria for a lot frontage lot. It contains three times the minimum required lot area for the zoning district and meets the lot with requirement. And it also contains the proper notation on the lot, so, and in looking at previous, you know, at our bylaws and looking at the previous plans that were approved, the, um, the reduced lot frontage lots normally are shown on an A and R plan and accepted along with A and R plans, so they're included.
Very creative.
Creative and got it done.
Yeah, that's true.
All right, board, any questions, comments, concern? I see Mark Allen's on if there are any questions.
I just had a question about the utility easement. Are there existing utility lines within that easement now?
There are not, no, that's proposed to be for the driveway and the future sewer line.
Okay, because I was just wondering why they didn't put it on the other lot. It's going to service that new lot, correct?
I'm sorry, you broke up a little bit?
Sorry. Is, is that going to service lot three?
The driveway and the sewer, yes.
So I was just wondering why they didn't put it on the access strip for lot three?
I see, yep, very, very good question. It's steep in topography and there's a, there's a stone retaining wall along Manchog Street. We didn't want to break through that retaining wall and have a, a, a steep cut along the roadway. It made a lot more sense to come off of the, the existing grid date where the existing driveway is, it's much smoother transition from the street.
Okay, thank you.
So that, that will be the driveway then for lot three?
Yes.
Yeah.
What? So the access strip is just there as part of the, uh, the zone, the, the bylaw requirement?
Exactly, yeah, the bylaw, section 4.3, the zoning regulations kind of define the access strip as that first 40 feet of frontage up to a certain width, so we show that as the access width.
Yep, but that's not going to be planned as a driveway?
Correct.
Okay.
Through the chair, can I ask, what is the width of this access strip?
Forty.
Forty feet, I can't see.
Fifteen, fifteen feet.
Fifteen?
The access strip is 40 feet, the easement, the easement is 15.
We're saying that the easement is the driveway to three?
Yes.
15 feet?
Yes.
And then, so the setbacks for lot two will still be, it's a quiet easement, it's going to be a quiet easement? No, it's an active easement because of the driveway.
Yes.
So the setbacks will be to, on the left side of the existing lot one setback, and then from the right side of the new lot two. And what does that allow them across there after the setback?
As far as the building envelope?
Yeah, unless they're going to go build in the back.
No, so lot, lot two basically has about 85 feet of width left to right to put the house on, lot two.
But if it's 15 and 85, that's 100, you're saying it's 100 foot frontage, how do you still, you have to have a side yard on the right, so it's okay, I mean, it's just going to.
Yeah, that's kind of.
Their business.
Yeah, we're, we're just worried about the A and Rs and if it meets our criteria.
It is what it is.
To the chair, one question, I know there's only about A and Rs, but you're putting in this driveway or this easement through these two lots, and when it snows out, where's that guy going to put his snow? You could have friendly neighbors, or there's going to be a world of hurt here, because there is absolutely no place, snow, blow, plow, I don't care, what you have, unless you have a load up, and even that, you peel over, now you're dumping it on your neighbors' apartment properties. 15 feet is nothing.
It is nothing.
So that I don't like, that aspect of it, I think it's wrong, 100% because I know we're doing Hanging On, but 15 feet wide a road, that, if it was a short little road, I could understand because you can get rid of the snow, you're not getting rid of the snow on this, I don't care what you do.
The other thing I thought is, in the past, normally when there's some type of utility easement, that it's, I don't know if it's illegal or it's not, it's not usually good practice to construct something permanent within an easement, whether it be a retaining wall, whatever, so to have an easement that contains a driveway on it?
Right, what happens if they put up, it's not our business, but if they put up a solid fence on the property line to put it off, and, and then he's got one on the right, and now they've got this little tunnel, and where are you going to put the snow? Like you said.
What are you going to do there?
Nothing.
I mean, you're green, an actual hazard in reality, nothing like that, and how are you going to have fire access?
Right.
There's a fire in the back there, it's January, how are you going to get up there?
So the, through the chair.
It's, I think on the safety side of it, especially having a jog like that, there's no, there isn't.
Fire truck, can't get too weird. So you're saying that, through the chair, that the left side, that's 40 foot for the, um, reduced frontage lot, um, it's not accessible from the street because of retaining wall there?
It would be, I mean, it is accessible, it's just not desirable, there's like a four-foot retaining wall right at the street side, and you'd have to break that wall and grade off on either side.
Why not? We got to get the fire truck up there.
Yeah.
So that, that, that becomes a question, like you said, of emergency access.
But I mean, doing an A and R here, don't get me wrong, but this isn't, I mean, we're cutting this up and allowing this to go on, and I'm, personally, I don't think it's right.
Right, so through the chair, we're thinking that the 40-foot exemption should hold the utility plus the driveway for lot three and get rid of that minutia, which is going to create a thing down the road, I mean, I, I just think, right, it's, this is not a standard A and R.
Correct.
Right, so I think we have some right to chime in.
Yes.
I mean, that's.
Because, because, I apologize, Mike, but there, yeah, by, by doing a reduced frontage lot, even though it's not a special permit or something approved through that mechanism, they are asking for some relief here.
Correct.
From the normal frontage with, with this, with this estate lot.
And there has to be fire access to this, and it's not that way now.
And that's, that's, again, this is one reason why basically the only basis to deny an A and R or not approve an A and R is access, and that could be public access or emergency access, so if the board is not satisfied with the access, we decide it.
And don't get me wrong, through the chair, as far as if they want to put utilities, I understand that, that happens a lot, I mean, your main juncture box is in that general area that you run, your sewer, your water, whatever, I, I can understand that, but the driveway itself, type deal, going over the small area, I think is 100% wrong.
And emergency access for fire trucks, that's correct.
I've done a bunch of these in other areas, and I have never, ever seen them try to stop a 15-foot wide little road all the way up and through.
And rule of thumb is you have to fit the largest fire apparatus, be able to fit the largest fire apparatus.
Can't make the 15 foot.
Need to get an N O.
In the city you can, but you're not going to do it in Chicago.
Well, there's that turn in it, too.
Yeah.
It's not like a straight shot.
It's a jog, yeah.
Can we ask Mr. Allen what his thoughts are, considering that?
Mr. Allen, thoughts on what you've heard?
Yeah, I, I didn't hear any questions, was there any questions?
So, if I may, the question is, if push comes to shove, and you have to have access, emergency access, and a driveway that is natural, why can't you break that retaining wall and make it happen? You know, do some grading, put a retaining wall on the right so that you can get your grade up, because what hap, how's the fire truck going to get back there? So can you do that in the 40 footer?
It's easier through the 15 footer because it's actually flat.
It's not a matter of easier, can you do it through the 40 footer, Mr. Engineer? I just want, you're the expert, so you can, I'm sure.
Yeah, you can, absolutely, you can break the wall and grade it off in two locations.
Good.
This is, this is a safer and more adequate access because the existing driveway curb can exist today, and it's a straight, flat shot at the back.
It's, it's not straight.
I mean, every, everybody in this 12-foot wide driveway, every fire truck can gain access to their property, this is no different. If you tell, if you tell the people in Douglas that they can't have a fire truck pull up their driveway, this is the exact same location, this is the exact same situation.
They don't have to pull up every driveway.
Through the chair.
They're agents on the road.
I'm going to back up on that, you're absolutely wrong, you have two different buddies on each side of this driveway, because by driveway, you can put snow, whatever, wherever you want in your own personal property, you don't have that in this situation, you only have 15 feet to do it all in, period, you don't have access to both buddies' property lines. If they put a fence down both sides of that easement, what are you going to do?
Plus, no.
You don't, you put it down one side, the easement isn't property line, it'll only be one side.
The neighbor on the other side can put a fence down it, both of them can, both sides of that easement.
Yep.
Lot one and lot three can both put fence down.
They can put a fence on each side of that 15-foot wide easement. You have two different buddies.
I think you got to put your thinking cap on this one.
All right, so.
We're, we're just before the form of the plan that complies with the current zoning bylaws, so it's up to you.
But again, access is, access is the key element to any approval required of a plan.
All right.
Right, there are no fences there now, no, we're not showing any fences, you can put it in your condition, no fences.
No, you can't condition an A and R.
That's correct.
You cannot condition an A and R.
We showed, we showed the site distance, adequate site distance, is adequate grade.
I would, I guess I would just state that if there wasn't a 40-foot wide access strip available, then I think that we would need to do this, but since there is a 40-foot wide access strip available for using it for a driveway and utility easement, that it's just a better option than trying to jam it into a 15-foot, and it's not a straight shot, there's a turn in that.
Yeah, there's a, there's a mild bend in it, absolutely. We've done this, we've done this many times around town, we've even done it to avoid tree clearing, there are significant large streets in this area, we've even crossed wetlands to, to, you know, avoiding crossing wetlands, this is not something new in Douglas by any means, I've been working in town for 25 years or so, and it's, it's not uncommon.
All right, hold on, I'm going to just try to bring this to a resolution for, for now. Can you, do we have language of what's exactly required for the access? Do we have any, what's the word that access needs to meet for us?
Well, it's, it's not a set in stone thing, there is some subjectivity to it, because, you know, for instance, with A and Rs, the, the regulations are very loose, in other words, someone could derive frontage off an ancient way or a paper street, and that could be adequate frontage. In those cases, that's where the board has to weigh whether or not there's proper adequate access, and usually, the litmus test is your emergency access vehicles. If you can't get emergency access down there, then.
So why don't we ask? Get an opinion, ask the fire department. You know, get a letter from him saying.
Either that and or counsel.
Yeah.
On this, on what aspect, whether we have that, whether we can or whatever.
So what, what we're going to need is, we're going to need an extension of time to act on the A and R to the meeting on September 10th, so we can follow up on this and see if this is adequate.
Okay, yeah, if the fire department can get their truck up.
But I want, excuse me, through the chair, I want them to know that it's, it's been recommended under this, uh, very, you know, this version, that there was no access through this 40 for fire apparatus, and see what the fire chief says. I mean, it's not like the house is going to be right there, it's going to be back, you know, in the, in the back 90 on this thing, yeah. I mean, I'm all for whatever works, but it doesn't work.
You want to make sure it's going to work.
Yeah.
If, through the chair, if a person owned, say, the 40-foot strip, had a 15-foot wide driveway, I have no problem with that, it is because you got all, you own the landable side, you do whatever you want. You have neighbors on each side of this 15-foot strip, which you, by law, don't have any access to, period, so you are confined at 15 feet, not 15 feet and one inch, 15 feet, that's it.
So, the board would, basically, so the applicant has options, um, you know, if he's amenable to granting an extension on time to act to September 10th, that would be great, if not, then the board may be forced to take a vote tonight if that, if that's not granted.
Mr. Allen?
Unfortunately, I don't have the power to, to grant that extension, I'd have to talk to the Douglas, I don't know what their timeframe is, they're, they're out of town tonight, so I'd have to get back to tomorrow.
Well, we can't.
Well, they're going to, we're going to run out of time, it's 21 days of constructive approval, so that may force the board's hand to make a decision tonight, because if it goes past 21 days without the board acting, that's constructive approval.
Correct, I leave, just unreasonable.
So the board may know, so the board may have no choice if it's not looking favorably on this to deny this, and then I could follow up with the fire department, we could take it up at a, at a future meeting.
Right, it could have been less creative and just been two lots, we've got three, you got, you got to work with that, that's like another lot.
Can I throw a suggestion through the chair? Is deny it, but to reapply, waive the fee, where they've already paid the fee, whether it's the same in or modified plan, where, because we're up against a, a deadline.
Yeah.
They're allowed to reapply, either with an updated plan or the same plan or whatever after the discussion, but we'll waive the fee for doing that aspect.
And I could follow up with the fire department, and if it comes back in their favor, they can simply reapply, and if the board votes to waive the fee, we can take this up on the next agenda.
I mean, there's only fair to waive the fee on that aspect of it.
Sure.
Okay, all right, Mr. Allen, any further, um, thoughts, arguments for accepting, or anything like that, comments from you for it, before we go?
I think everything, I, I think everything makes sense, um, you know, let the board do what they do, it sounds like we'll be at the next agenda one way or the other.
Yeah.
I just, I don't have the power to grant an extension, so if you'd like to deny it and reapply, it's fine.
Okay, all right, so with that, we'll, um, do a positive vote anyways, so, entertain a motion to endorse the A and R plan for.
Well, if you endorse, that means it's approved as it is.
We're trying, we're going to.
Well, we still do a vote, and if it's voted.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, so a motion to endorse the A and R plan for Manchog Street.
Roll call?
We need a, a motion and a second, and then a vote, okay.
Right, so move, and then you can, second.
Okay, so motion made by Mr. DeRose, second by Mr. Sokrath, any further discussion? Uh, roll call, yeah, probably just a roll call vote, let's go around the table. Meg?
Meg Schlesman, do I say?
You said nay.
No.
Aaron Sokrath, nay.
Nay.
Mike DeRose, nay.
Rich Preston, nay.
Mike Schrock, nay.
Jake Kanaic, nay.
Okay.
So I will follow up with the fire department on this and see what they say.
Yeah, and just follow up with Mark and Dunleavy, just to make sure it's.
Yeah, I will follow.
We want to take a vote to.
Do we make a motion to waive the fee for refiling?
Yes, would you like to do that, Mike?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the fee for refiling.
Sophie.
On this A and R plan.
Motion made by Mrs. Zwicker, second by Mr. Preston, okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah.
All right, public hearing, there are none.
Taking that home, sure.
All right. Additional business, letter of support, T-Mobile grant for open space committee, possible votes, Becky, just come up to this chair and tell us what's going on, and, uh, state your name and your affiliation for us and for the minutetaker.
Becky Calliger, I'm on the Douglas Open Space Committee.
Okay.
We are trying to, we're going to apply for T-Mobile Hometown Grant to get a parking area established, the access to the backside of Keaven property opened up and a kiosk installed. There'll be some moving around of stone walls, the stone wall that's on the edge of the road, we're going to move that along the side of the, right side of the parking lot and on the backside of the parking lot to delineate.
Yeah, so for those who may not know where the Keaven property is and what your, um, the issues you have of access in it.
The town of property owns a 60-acre parcel of property that's called Keaven on the Douglas Pike, Southeast, Southeast Main.
Southeast Main.
Oh, the one that has to sign out?
Yes.
Who I've spoken to many times about moving the stones and cutting trees and stuff.
Yes.
Yeah.
We, I happened to find this grant.
Nice, nice.
Hopefully it will work, so anyways, um, there's a lot of boulders in that trail that need to be moved out of the way, both the buddies on either side are good with putting the stones and the boulders to line the right of way, that way there it keeps anyone going where they need to stay on the property, not getting onto private property, so.
And also helps with overgrowth.
Yes, and it's cheaper to leave the boulders there than trying to chuck them out, so that will save on some cost. So anyways, we need, we would like letters of support from the different, various boards in town here for the application, and I'm here tonight to request a letter of support. And I don't know if Sue gave you a sample letter?
We do, I may, I'm looking at one.
Something in his packet, yeah.
Okay, um, I did a version point three for the planning board, because I, I used to review grants for the Massachusetts Recreational Trails Advisory Board, and having the same letter from each of the boards is.
So the only, the, the letter doesn't say which version it is, that's the only thing, so I don't know if you can look at it and.
Yes, that was the original one.
Okay.
So I.
So there's another one.
I can read you the new one if you wish.
I think, I don't think we need to hear it, yeah, yeah, I, I think we have the gist of it and we have the draft, so I.
They trust you.
Yeah.
Well, we're staying here, Tom.
It just didn't look.
Unless you're not, you know, you didn't add that you're looking to get this grant to make a subdivision back there, I think we can trust your.
It's just worded different, from a different point of view.
Yeah, I, I think that's fine.
Through the chair.
I will give that to whoever wants to.
I'll pass it down to John.
Would you like to sign this with the chair?
Yeah, as long as.
Well, that needs to be on your, whatever your letterhead is and.
Oh, okay, yeah, I can do that then.
Yeah, if you want to.
Yeah, I'll do that tomorrow.
I can send you the word document, so you don't have to read.
Yeah, no, that'd be great, if you could do that, then I could get that and I could hook up with Jake and think.
I can even just authorize you to stamp it, stamp it, we have the stamps here.
Sounds good, yeah.
Auto pen?
Oh, God. I'm still with it, don't worry.
Through the chair, I was speaking with Sue, is, is the idea to create the 14-foot, you know, move the boulders, move the trees open so cars can drive down through there?
No.
And the park, where would the park, along the street, where would the park can go?
It's right in front, so you've got the 14, 14.5 foot.
Yeah.
Access, and then right next to that is a 10-foot wide, 20-foot deep easement.
Right, okay.
So you've got 10 plus 14, so 20, you're going to be able to get like two cars in.
Nice, well better than zero.
Yeah, correct, and I kind of figured if we also cleared in front of that stone wall, we've got some space right there, so increase the line of sight and somebody could park from the stone wall right there and two inside.
Okay.
There'll be a kiosk in the back there with map eventually.
Nice.
Through the chair, just, I had no idea what this was when I saw it in our web copy, and I looked it up, and it's actually a requirement for the grant to have several board recommendations, so it's not just a courtesy, I mean, this, this is necessary, and I think, you know, when I was looking at it, it's like, wow, they're just giving away money to do stuff like that, so why not?
Grab the ring.
We could try.
Do you know how much money is out there and what's available to get?
Uh, $50,000 I think was the limit for.
Per applicant?
Correct.
Okay. Don't go a long way.
We won't, shouldn't be over that.
All right, with that, board, any other questions?
Great work.
Yeah.
All right. Anyone care to make a motion to?
I would make a motion.
Okay, motion to support the letter?
I would make a motion to support the letter that's been presented to us, and, and to support the engagement with the Open Space Committee on the property on Southeast Main Street, in whatever endeavor they are to raise funds.
Okay.
Did I say that?
Okay, motion made by Mrs. Sokrath, second by Mr. Zwicker, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and, um, just so we can get it to the board, it's going to be submitted, I, any, board have any issue with?
Giving you the permission to sign it?
Yeah, me, me to sign it and have John stamp it on my behalf.
Want a motion for that? Give you the motion.
All right, motion made, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
There will be no changes.
Yep. Thank you, thank you, Becky.
Thank you, appreciate your work.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the work.
Send that to me as soon as you can, and I'll get that done right away.
Tonight?
Sure.
It'll work.
Awesome.
If you, if you have it and you can print it and get it back here in the next, within an hour, or you can have it signed, or we have it stamped?
I'm not sure what your letterhead is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, all right. Yeah, I'll just copy and paste on time.
We'll take care of it.
That's too much.
All right, Mr. Preston, you're up for the master plan committee update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. See, so the master plan committee last met on Wednesday, July 16th, we completed a discussion on the population housing element, findings and proposed recommendations by CMRPC, and began one discussion on the transportation circulation element, covering roads, bridges, sidewalks, and traffic circulation patterns, et cetera. Our next meeting is scheduled for August 20th, and we'll be discussing CMRP's findings regarding town services facilities.
Good job. Good update.
Welcome any questions.
Board, any questions on, on the progress?
Nope.
We're in phase two?
Phase two, yeah, as I said last time, phase one was really collecting the data, and as you know, we would, we did surveys, open house, site visits, department head meetings, uh, and then CMRC, and CMRPC and the Master Plan Committee kind of collated that and discussed it, and now we're going about writing the master plan, so they go through each element, they go through the, um, the data that we find and recommendations, the master plan kinda goes back and forth, and we finalize that, they'll put it together, and we'll have a written master plan.
Awesome, all right. Johnny, you have any updates for, on your, on your, from your office on that?
No, just I, I did have a phone conversation with Will from CMRPC today regarding the, the transportation element, and he had some follow-up questions, a couple, a couple of which I could answer, a couple of which I had to defer to other people, but not have the right knowledge of that, so he's gonna be following up with Adam Ferno, um, as we had a discussion about bridge replacement, and, um, he's gonna be following up with town administration and a couple of other things, but I think what's valuable about these discussions with CMRPC is, you know, whenever, you know, you have a consultant with CMRPC come in and they put together a master plan, there's certain tasks and there's certain action items that may not be completely applicable to the town that they're working in, so it's, the committee's kind of sorting through that and kind of commenting on, well, we don't really know what this applies to, so I think it's really valuable to kind of mold the master plan to be relative to the others.
By, through the chair.
Yep.
Mr. Preston, um, that meeting I was at, I should have spoken about it.
Yes, I remember it well, Eric.
Yep, so they did actually do the actions that they were gonna do with some properties and landmarks, so I'm just saying they were out, doing their thing, and we were happy with that.
We did visit your, your farm there, some nice area shots.
Oh, good, 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 that's what it's there for, it's for the future.
But you didn't tell your son we were coming.
No.
There was a little dance there.
I keep that, him on his toes.
All right.
Thought it was the Department of Agriculture coming.
Rich does, Rich does a great job, yeah.
All right, good stuff, keep up the good work, all right. Uh, subdivision regulations discussion.
So, um, in your packet originally was a version of the bylaw amendments that was from February, I replaced them at the last minute, 'cause I realized that I had done some other changes recently, um, as of July 15th, just, yeah, changes to the number of copies required, just nothing, nothing significant, so I want to present this to the board tonight, not to necessarily start sorting through all the changes, but to put it on your radar, so maybe you guys could review this going into the next meeting on the 10th, and, you know, maybe we don't need to go through every change, but if there are certain changes that you want to discuss or bring up, we could talk about those at the next meeting and then-
This is the one.
Yes, the one, yeah, the July one is the most recent, so-
Getting thicker.
Well, it's only, it's single something, that's why.
But it's bigger font.
Exactly. Pretty good, yeah, so, um, so, um, what I would like is, and I talked to Jake about this on the phone, is, um, once we've gone through the changes and the, and the board is, has agreed on the changes that are gonna be made, then we can schedule a public hearing, that we can officially vote on those changes and any vote. So I'm hoping that maybe at the next meeting, we can go through, I mean, if it takes a couple meetings, that's fine, but, you know, if we can get through the changes, then we can schedule a public hearing for finals.
I understand what public hearing is required, this is regulations.
Yes, it is, public hearing with the planning board is required for subdivision, absolutely.
We, we had one, we had one going.
It doesn't have to go to town meeting, but yes, a public hearing has to be held by the planning board for any changes to the subdivision.
Through the chair, I have one question. Should we not have a work talk, and we just schedule something that all we do is focus on this, go line by line or whatever, and like, I, I need to be, I need to be sequestered to do something.
That's, 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 that's up to the board.
Yeah.
I think, I don't think we have anything big coming, do you, do you have any word or whispers of big projects or anything coming in?
Uh, no, not on the radar, um, anything that's gonna require a public hearing would, you know, have to be applied for in that legal aspect, so it would take like, it would probably take about, you know, six weeks, I'd have, I'd have good advance notice if something's coming up for a public hearing.
Yeah, so I, I think it's, it's nothing big and major, it's being whispered.
The next couple of meetings are gonna be kind of light, so, um, like I said, the, from what I understand, obviously, yeah, so from what I understand, obviously, these changes were discussed before my time here, so, um, you know, so, so basically, I'm assuming these have been discussed before and that hopefully there's nothing too controversial, but yeah, so it's, it's up to the board, but, but we have a couple of light agendas coming up in September, so I think we should be able to get through it.
I do see the signature block that we just talked about, A and R, being, being on there.
When's our next meeting?
September 10th.
And I do know, a little bit ago, we never got into it heavy, was the sidewalks becoming a big deal to discuss, but everybody, the highway department involved with Ken, the building inspector involved, to get everybody together to try to figure out what is gonna be best moving forward, because anything we decide, the town's gonna own, and what's gonna work best all the way around for everybody to accept.
Yeah, I would, I think, I would love to get the highway and even the town administrator's input of what, anything that they would like to add or see or us to discuss.
Well, a lot of it was started, as you remember, through the chair, before, um, before John arrived.
Yeah.
And, well, we just stopped everything to see what was gonna go on, so like, here's some, like, from the highway department from back, and January was started, but then it kinda stopped, but to get that conversation and those people back together again, where even if we're gonna discuss it here for a meeting, if they're available, to come in and, you know, communicate together at the same time-
Yeah.
Would be helpful.
So, um, I would think, in flipping through the changes that were made, it seems like there are a lot of administrative changes-
Yeah.
That really don't need much discussion, it sounds like there may be one or two things that need a more lengthy discussion, so, I mean, if, if the board decides that it would be good to have, you know, an outside meeting to go through those things, then you can obviously do that, um, so I guess my suggestion would be, let's, you know, let's take a look at these and put it on the agenda for the 10th, and then we can make a decision then as far as if we need to do something.
Through the chair, if I may ask this, I'm not that great at this, yet may never be, Mr. Preston, that's all we've said about these waivers, you guys, we're waivers, when we're looking at this, is there any way that we can modify or try to, I don't know, is waivers important, not important, I mean, when we're looking at this, so?
I, I, that's a great point, and, um, when I was working in the town of Brenton, that came up, sidewalks came up in Brenton, there were certain elements of the subdivision rules and regs that would constantly have waivers requested by developers and granted by the planning board, my opinion is that I would much prefer having more reasonable regulations that aren't waived all the time, because what is the use of having that regulation if it's always being waived? And the example I could think of is, um, they would always require sidewalks on both sides of a new subdivision roadway, asphalt sidewalks, and constantly developers would come in and ask for a waiver-
One side.
Doing it on one side, and the board would grant it, so I had started working with the DBW director, 'cause they're like, why'd you do that? So what we had started to work on, but didn't get to it before I, I moved on, was, um, requiring sidewalks on one side and having them be concrete so they last longer and not waiving them, so have reasonable regulations, because the waivers are at the discretion of the board, so, um, I, I'm a big fan of having reasonable regulations that you don't waive all the time, because again, what is, what is the point of that? So if, if we feel that there's regulations that are no longer, that are a little bit excessive, yeah, we could, we could modify that a little bit and make them a little bit more-
Wasn't there, I'm sorry, sorry, Richard.
Yeah, that's all we, a second point for me, and that I think it's important for us to provide the best product we can, why would we waive that, right, we waive concrete and granite, we, we want to give them the best product we can, and, um, if we don't, I think we're doing the town a disservice, 'cause they have to accept the road and the people who live there.
What's up?
And, and also, Mike, it's just sidewalks, why not put sidewalks, I wanna give them a big thing, why not put sidewalks, why not make it more convenient for people across the road, and, and actually, you had mentioned that you had granted somewhere, and you saw that they had something, but it actually wasn't there.
It's nice to walk around the whole neighborhood and do a whole loop and-
Why not, why can't we give them the best product possible?
In my opinion, in my very honest opinion, what it comes down to is the cost of the developer, the developer doesn't want to put in the additional sidewalks because of the cost, and what some, I know that the planning board of Brenton, their attitude was, well, we kinda use waivers as leverage to get something else, to get some other kind of feature of mitigation that we want, that's, that was their view of waivers, to kind of, well, if they, if they want to get a waiver on the sidewalks, then we might ask for something else at the entrance of the subdivision that we may want, or something, something along those lines.
So I guess my concern is, if I could, or, you know, a lot of times, especially in small town, you get to know each other, we get to know each other, and it's difficult, but my feeling is, I want to get in the grandstand, we're here for the residents, that's who we're here for, we're not here for the, they can do what they can do, we want to do a great job, I don't feel we represent that, I don't.
Right.
So if you want to do a subdivision in town, this is what you do, if you can't afford it, you don't do it, you know what I mean, so I just, I think it's gonna be a full discussion, I wouldn't even mind having a dedicated meeting for that, but I want to give the best product possible, and I, I can show you examples, if you look at Springville on North Street, you know that subdivision, it's a lovely community, my son lives there, we had talked about it, so I finally found those monuments.
Yeah.
And go up there and look at the sidewalk, that was a tsunami of noise, dude, look at the sidewalk, there's, there's a really horrible, the two of us concrete, I have another word for that, I won't share with you, it's the two of us concrete-
Offline?
Yeah, the two manats. The two manats, the two manats. So, go look at that-
That's the PG-13.
Go look at that, go, I have a different term. Go look at that sidewalk today, and what's interesting is, you go three or four houses in, it's about this wide, it was an, if you gotta walk single file, that's what we left those people, that's what they had today.
I remember going through there on Halloween, and I'm like, wow, this sidewalk's tight and-
It's Halloween central.
Yeah.
My son was horrified.
Yeah.
Well, that is Halloween. It's Halloween central, I like it.
So there are, there are certain waivers that I, over the years, I've found are very common, one is the sidewalks, second is the curbing, they, not, not street cheese, 'cause not every town has the street cheese, 'cause street cheese are really not expensive, it's the curbing, it's the sidewalk, and it's the paving, those are the real cost, those are the big costs whenever a subdivision's in, and, you know, all the time, you know, I've seen boards waive the vertical granite curbing in certain, and some instances it makes sense, where if you're on a more rural area, maybe a Cape Cod berm or country drainage can work, you know, so it, it is a case-by-case basis in some instances where sometimes, you know, vertical granite curbing can be a little bit overkill, or may not give the look in certain areas of town that, that the residents want, so there, there is, there is value to having a little bit of flexibility on a case-by-case basis, but I agree with you, Rich, and, uh, you know, so I'm all for having, you know, tailoring the regulations to, you know, to a point where you're not waiving all, all the time, because-
And even with like the curbing in sidewalks, I'd like to get the highways' opinion, 'cause at the end of the day, they're gonna be accepting it and be responsible for it, and I know I love granite curbing, but I know for the town's point of view, granite curbing gets torn up, that's a lot more expensive to fix and replace than a Cape Cod berm of asphalt, so-
It's harder to plow, yeah, it, it, damage just plows.
So I'd like to just get, when we get into the nitty-gritty of it, I'd like to get their blessing, their recommendations and-
Through the chair, I'm gonna, I agree with my consistent whip a little bit, but in one breath, we can always complain that housing costs too much, and this is why, when a contractor has to spend an extra quarter million dollars to do a sidewalk on one side of the road, he's gonna put it on the price of the house, so you have to have that fair balance of a good product that's reasonable, but yet to appease 90% of everybody that's crying that it costs too much to live in Douglas to buy a house, and that's why, the contractor cannot come in and build a development when you want to dump the millions and millions of dollars in the road instructions, you gotta put on the house, and then the person buying the house is gonna pay for it.
Through the chair, Mike-
So you need to have that balance.
Would you agree that maybe, I know this isn't a, that a fine balance is the one side?
Well, that's-
Yeah, I think that's something-
It's only what it's talking about, but make it right.
We have to think about the town, the people, and the developer, that's the balance we're doing here.
Right.
It's a fine balance line where you got people going, it costs too much, it costs too much, it costs too much, but then on the other side, do this, do this, do this, the builder is not gonna absorb that cost, period, it ain't gonna happen, this is the real world, he passes it on to the end user.
Takes it out of there.
If you want to keep house prices down, everything has to be reasonable to a certain point.
And in, every project is gonna be different too, 'cause-
Correct.
One, one single road, five lots, subdivision is much different than an entire neighborhood, you know, Downs Road or the, you know, off of this Douglas Sutton development there, like-
So you're saying the larger the volume of houses, they can do more.
Correct.
Not necessarily, 'cause all they're building is million-dollar homes on it, I mean, because of the cost of the infrastructure, that's where the money is, infrastructure.
It's materials too, there's also materials and labor.
Well, you're certainly, I'm sorry, um, through the chair, you're certainly not gonna get affordable housing to have concrete sidewalks on either side, I, I love the aesthetics of it and the idea of it, I just, there is such a need for housing and, and affordable housing particularly, which is kind of an oxymoron anyway, but I just, I don't know that, to Mike's point, that developers are, are going to put sidewalks on both sides.
We have accessory apartments, you know, typical.
The reality is with low and moderate income housing and senior housing, you're not gonna see it, because it's, the numbers just don't work, and I don't know what, what the discernible difference would be between putting more sidewalks or granite curbs in there, how much does that really add, add to their cost in terms of, you know?
Depends on the length, obviously, but, yeah.
Money's gonna drive the cost of housing, you know?
But obviously, Cape Cod berm is a lot less expensive to install than-
Oh, yeah.
Than setting granite curbing, the cost of granite curbing, the concrete, the setting them, the labor, things like that.
I mean, the granite gets damaged, but the, the two of us concrete-
Oh, yeah, that gets torn up.
It gets torn up all the time, and it doesn't look good, no.
Sorry, I have one more question, can, can someone point to me to where the requirements for entrances to commercial endeavors such as Blue Wave and the Solar Place on West Street, who is responsible for what that looks like in a residential area and the maintenance of that road going in and the aesthetics of what that looks like?
They are.
You mean like the riprap and how deep and how-
The property owner. Yeah, the property owner.
The, because West Street, it, it's terrible, it looks terrible, right in between two residential homes, they don't maintain it, they don't, and I, I just don't know that we, there's a mechanism to force them to do that.
And obviously, they'll be coming forward in September, and we can talk about that, that's, that's obviously not a subdivision, that would be the private property owner who, who would be responsible for installing it.
Do they still need anything from us, where we have some leverage?
Yeah, let's not.
I don't want to get there.
I don't want to have that discussion without Ken here, without-
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But what's three ones completely different?
There's a lot of discussion to hammer out on the sidewalks and stuff like that, um, and as we've heard before, you figure average order, it's a million a mile.
Yeah, pavement.
It's a million a mile, have to put in a road, so, the town is gonna eat it, and that's the whole part of it, making it fair, making it right, and discussing it, and like you say, have a good product.
It's a good lasting product.
Right, exactly, 100%, I mean, that's what it's here, and that's what this is all about, to get everybody together like we started back in January, and get the discussion going again on what can be done and how it can be all hammered out, you know?
And also proper monitoring and follow-up too, 'cause, you know, if you tell them to do four inches and then no one's there to follow up and they only lay two-
Well, that's what, that's what I keep reviewing, you're supposed to be out there looking at that inch of it.
And as we're finding out to the chair on some of these projects, we need to be And as we're finding out to the chair on some of these projects, we need to be very specific in this. As far as strength of concrete, width, breaks out, all that kind of stuff, whether, you know, how would I say it, the width, and, and everything has to be very specific, because if not, they're not going to do it. The day of a handshake deal doesn't work anymore. Now, if it's not black and white, it's not going to get done.
And reading through these, John, have you noted or seen anything you, you would want to maybe make some changes to, or additions, or...
No, it's, it's pretty much, we'd have to really dig into the numbers and everything. Again, I would, things like sidewalks, I would defer to Adam on that one.
Absolutely. This was, like I said, in January, we started, but then things kind of stopped.
And some of this is, is at the discretion of the board of the town, you know? And, you know, there are different ways to do things, different towns have different, you know, levels of expectation. So it all depends on what this board and the town thinks is, is in the best interest of the town.
And I think Ken should be involved a lot, too, on the same aspect.
It's going to be a long meeting.
Well, that's why, if we feel like it's going to be an extensive meeting, then we can take Aaron's suggestion and, and have a special meeting.
Yeah, and I think any input we can get from the town department heads leaning into it will, will help the process.
A long meeting now saves a lot of headaches later.
It's worth it, though.
It's worth the time.
You guys want to set that up? I don't, you guys, I don't care, I'll do it.
I like John's point of reviewing it and next meeting, then decide.
Yeah, see what happens.
Yeah, a dig-in meeting.
It'd be pretty, you know, good coffee table reading for the next couple of weeks.
Coffee, bring coffee.
And you'll have a better sense of, okay, these are the one or two things that we really...
Correct.
And the sidewalk one may be the, the one thing, you know?
Well, it's always been a waiver, that's why.
Yeah.
Right, with trees and...
All right. We will definitely tackle that. So Stormwater Regulation Subcommittee membership.
Yeah, I wanted to just discuss this, because coming out of the discussion at the last meeting and, and talking to, to Matt about this and hearing what the suggestions were, and I talked to you, Jacob, on the phone the other day about this. You know, so obviously, you know, having a representative of the planning board, the select board, the conservation commission is essential. And then when we talked about, you know, having a representative for the finance committee, have a representative, representation for the ZBA, those are not normally boards that would be represented on, for a topic like this, but we have members of those two boards in Margaret and Carol that people agree, seem to agree, have a lot of knowledge.
Margaret, that's all.
Yes. So here was my idea for the board's consideration for membership of this bylaw committee. Planning board, select board, conservation representative, and then just appoint Margaret and Carol, and we have a five member per committee. That would be my suggestion. And I like keeping committees fairly compact and not having them get too unwieldy. And so...
The only thing I've, I just thought of, I know it was extended out to conservation when it was first made, and they never got a member on there.
Okay.
So they, I don't know if they'll be able to...
Okay.
Do that again.
So I can, well, through Jen, I can, I can reach out. I could talk to the conservation chair and have her put it on the next agenda.
And then I know Colin was very helpful on the first board, so.
I'm hearing mixed messages about, because sometimes I've seen this in other towns, where when somebody serves on a certain board or a certain subcommittee, sometimes they, they say, okay, I served on this, but now I don't want to serve on the next one, especially when it's something that was likely. So I've, I've heard whispers that, you know, that he may not necessarily want to be on this, and, you know, um, the other thing is, you know, we're coming up with, with, this, this is a little bit different, this, this is right with regulations. So, you know, um, the composition of the subcommittee may be a little bit different because it is regulations rather than an actual bylaw.
So if I may go back, before your, it was set up where this, the subcommittee was asked as a committee, would you like to work on doing the next phase of this? And the whole committee said yes, except for Adam Ferdinand, because he's committed with the Howard Department. So now you're going in and you're mixing that all up. So I don't know, if you want to go back and look at minutes, at certain things, I personally think, like I said, for myself, if somebody else wants to do it, please, jump in on it. But I think the board that set up all the bylaw stuff had already committed and said they would go the next step forward. And I think that was right here at the planning board meeting, because that was asked about setting that all up. And I think it was even, I thought it started, but then it was stopped on setting up for the next phase, so. Go with it any way you want, but I'm just saying, that's how.
How many were there on there? Was there seven with Adam and then?
Was the facilities guy there?
No.
There were seven or eight of us, yeah.
Because when you think about it, this is stormwater runoff. It's different than the water and sewer system of the infrastructure of the town.
It must have been seven, because it...
Trying to run it through off my head.
I'm just trying to think if Adam's out, then that would be an even number, so it's kind of a...
So people were seven, that we're there to dispute our vote needed amongst ourselves would be our number.
Yeah, I'm just thinking now, here, and that Adam's not going to be involved, then we're at six, so...
That's what he said then. So that would be something to ask now, where it's been a while, but back then, that's what we stated.
Do we want to confirm if the band wants to get back together? And then if not, go with five? But...
Or get a hold of the chair, Les Stevens.
He's, he's leaving it up to the planning board.
Right, so I just asked, we asked Les to get a hold of everybody that was on the committee, and then roll call on it. I'll do that.
Then...
You as the chair. And he's the one that wanted to do the regulations, so.
So you want to do that, then? Just have Les confirm if the band's going to get back together, and if not, bring it down to five and...
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
That's about that.
All right. Ongoing development, we have any updates?
Sure.
Okay.
So the Cube's at Gilboa, obviously it's complete, still looking for an occupant. Is that something that the board wanted to take off this list, since the building is complete? There's no more work to be done?
They have their occupancy, everything.
Yeah, they're just looking for a tenant now.
Yeah, it takes stuff off the list.
Hey, one thing comes up.
And obviously, if something comes up.
Yeah, I can always, I can, yeah, if there's something the board needs to know, I can always mention that.
Yeah.
And they'll let us know if they get a tenant.
Yeah.
After all that...
Oh, I'm sure you'll hear. Business Park at Legacy Circle actually met with the McAtires today with Ken on a different matter, but they did say that they're expecting a, a resolution to the appeal soon.
Okay.
So that, that appeal may, may go away soon, so that'd be nice. 45 Oak Street Solar, that's going to be on the next agenda, obviously. No update on Stone Gate. Witten Reservoir Estates, we're waiting for the engineer to be hired, an engineer to be hired before they proceed with that subdivision.
Can you confirm which one's Stone Gate?
That's a good question. Again, I have to look at the road. At the top of my head, I'm, I'm not sure what roadway that is. Again, if, if I had it my way, all these subdivisions would be named after the main roadway, so it's easy to know what they are.
Stone, I don't know. I don't know which one's Stone Gate.
Deer Crossing, no update on that one. Gilboa Court Extension, possibly construction beginning this fall.
Okay.
So that's hopeful. Evergreen Estates, no update. Sleepy Hollow, the road's been accepted, and they're working on getting the post town meeting documents processed for the acceptance of the roadway, the legal documents. In fact, I know Lisa was working on that today with Bob and Eric. Hawkeville Farms, that's obviously ongoing. No specific update on that. Douglas Subdivision, hearing whispers that construction may begin in the spring of 2026.
Wow.
So that may get, that...
But we've been hearing whispers every year, so...
I think what, 30 houses?
At least, yeah, it was a decent size.
30 houses.
Yeah. Um, no update on Walum Solar. Holy Erie Welding is under construction.
Yeah, they're doing well, yeah.
Yep. Douglas Package Stores received their demolition permits, so they're, you know, will be starting on that soon. No update on Webster Street. The lane at Hunts Pond, the sale is in process. I feel there may be a closing coming up soon, in the next couple of weeks. So what I'm going to need to do with the new owner is I've started going through the planning board decisions on these, and started a spreadsheet tracking the conditions of approval of what needs to be done at certain points. There's quite a bit that they're going to need to do. They've been, their attorney's been in contact with Brian Winner of our town council to actually execute a covenant that really should have been done before the plans were endorsed, but we're holding the plans until that gets done. So that's the first step, and then they need to do tech review, and I'm going to have them come back before the planning board, because again, they want to amend their phasing to do everything in one phase instead of splitting that up.
It's quite a portfolio we have.
Yeah, yeah. William Estates, we're actually doing a site visit on Monday with our peer review engineer, because the applicant has replenished our 53G account, and they should be getting close to completion on that and potential acceptance in spring.
Okay.
We'll see how that goes on Monday. They had about seven or eight punch list items, minor nature, most of them. So hopefully, they'll be, they'll be done with those when we go up there on Monday. And so, yeah, that's all I have on those projects.
Okay.
The chair, I have a question if I could.
Yes.
John, I know that these developments are coming through us, but just, I think they should be on the radar because they're part of the whole. Speaking about the 40B project, one up on North Street.
The 40B?
40B is one up on North Street.
Yes.
Being completed. There's also one proposed itself East Fame Street. And although they go through, CBA...
There's been no update on those yet, because I know that the 40B project we did a site walk on early this summer, they're still waiting for their letter of approval from the state, so that really hasn't gotten off the ground yet.
Right, what I'm saying is, I wasn't looking for information, sorry, but should it be on our list and on our radar? Because when we're managing it, they've short circuited our zoning.
Yeah.
But we should be aware of it, because it's part of the whole, you know, that it's out there.
Yeah. Yeah, so once they get going, yes, they will be added to the list, but like I said, this...
Where is that on South?
Southwest.
Southwest, sorry. Okay, that's probably, yeah.
Yeah. And then we have the other project, oh God, it's the property owned by Les Stevens' company. Again, they've been doing, they've been doing work out there, I think they've been doing some testing, soil testing out there, so that'll go on the list, obviously, when that comes forward, so...
Nothing on Perry Street Extension?
No.
The whole, you know, big development.
No, nothing on Perry Street Extension, no. So, yeah, so that's it. So, yeah, once those, once those start moving forward, Rich, those will get added to the list, absolutely, yeah.
Through the chair, John, what was the reason that Blue Wave Solar is not here tonight?
Because the buyer is out of the country, so she asked that it get continued post-pollinated, and so...
I think it's important for them to be here on the next meeting.
Yes. And I asked her if someone could come in her place, and she balked at that, so...
It's unfortunate.
Yeah, it is.
All right. Moving along, town plan a report, anything to add from what we've discussed?
Nope, I pretty much updated everything I need to update, and no, nothing to add.
Okay. In the packet, there's signatures, the decision for 15 Elm Street accessory apartment?
Yeah, if I could just go, go over this, this is the decision, the special permit for the accessory apartment that was approved at the last meeting by the board. I distributed it to everybody, haven't gotten any edits back, so, you know, the, the conditions, I'll just mention the conditions that were pointed out by the board at the public hearing. 13, during construction, the applicant shall utilize the existing paved driveway for 15 Elm Street that currently provides access to the dwelling for access by construction vehicles, and any storage or materials shall remain on the applicant's property. At no point shall the 25-foot right-of-way shown on the southern edge of the property be utilized for these purposes, because that is obviously the butter's driveway. It is noted that the width of the addition will be 24 feet rather than the 20-foot foot width listed on the approved segment. And I think those are the two specific conditions that the board mentioned. The rest are, are pretty much boilerplate from other accessory apartment decisions, such as the apartment shall now exceed the square footage indicated by the applicant, things of that nature. So the rest is pretty much standard.
If I may, the chair, is this the one that, the garage below? Does this one have a garage below?
Yes.
And it was concerned voice, which I didn't share the concern, but I want to make sure that you're comfortable, or does there need to be wording that? In no way does that get built out as part of the residence of living space. I don't think it's going to happen, but...
I don't know if that, I don't know if that needs to be stated.
The building inspector picked it up.
Because, well, because the, the planning board's approved of the plans that was presented, and that was not shown on the plans presented.
I'm fine with that. I like, I like the design, I thought it was okay.
Yeah.
But I remember Mike, you brought it.
Well, that was, that was the Waller Street one, that was a particular concern. That was the one that was brought up to build out of the garage.
Coopman's.
Oh.
That was the one with the concern about the garage.
It slipped in my head. That was the pretty extraordinary design, but it was eaves and...
I think we put a condition in it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the one.
That's the one, thank you.
It was a waiver regarding its size.
Yes.
Yes, they, they went, they exceeded the size by a little bit.
All right, and then also in the signature is the authorized agents for A and R signatures for the registry of deeds.
Yes, so I believe there's a form that needs to be signed to update the signatures for the registry.
It's all just in that packet.
So I think, yeah, I think everyone has signed that. Everyone's signed this tape?
They do it every, in cases new members.
Yeah. Yep, so thank you, so that's all set.
All right, minutes.
Got one, one thing before me. So I attended my first CMR-PC discussion.
Yay.
And it had to do with battery storage facilities.
That's a big topic around everywhere right now.
I don't know if everybody's familiar with the one that's going on up near Quabin, but there, the town feels totally helpless in it, because they have no control. It's, once you get to a certain size, the state, it's kind of like a 40B, the state says, you can just go do this and bypass everything. There's, there was a lot of people in the meeting that weren't actually familiar with it, because they weren't, I think it's sort of just dead center down the state, you know, the news that way, Worcester South and North gets it, but they, they were surprised to hear that this is part of the whole way it works now with, with that, and I guess certain solar, certain sizes, you know, get benefits like that from the state. There's, there was also a lot of discussion that towns had no resources to help them manage it, because there's, you know, there's new rules, but like a lot of things, they're vague, they haven't been challenged yet, and everybody's, the, the developers are moving as fast as they can to get everything in before any challenges start. they can to get everything in before any challenges start. So, uh, the biggest concern, I think, well, there's two. There's two actually, uh, but they're related. If they're using lithium, um, there's the fire concern. And also the pollution concern, because if there's a fire, well, there's going to be a lot of stuff going a lot of places, especially if there's an explosion. And, uh, there is a national fire code that I plan to get a copy of. I'll see, stop by the fire department at some point. And I just want to peruse it to see. It covers these facilities. It's pretty big. Um, I think that's probably our only avenue of managing this sort of thing, if it does come to our doorstep on a large scale. Um, because basically everything in the the rules from the state say it has to conform to that. So, uh, there's, uh, for instance, if you have, you don't have town water available and everything's on wells, how are you, the the way that you deal with those fires, you don't even fight them, you just cool it by showering with water continuously.
Actually, when we started discussing this in Rutland, the fire chief in Rutland said the new strategy is they just let the fire burn itself out.
That's, that's what the developers are saying they recommend.
Yeah, they, so.
Let it go.
You just kind of contain the area, or when you build these facilities, you you kind of contain it. So when it burns.
It doesn't expand.
It doesn't expand. That's their. You're absolutely right, Mike. And what's really concerning in between the ADUs and this, it really concerns me what the state is starting to do where, um, basically these these developers, applicants can go right to the state and get approval and bypass towns completely. It's really concerning what the state is doing in recent years. It's really, it's alarming. It really is where they just don't even care about the towns anymore. Like, yep, come straight to us. And Oakham, Oakham is having a huge problem with theirs.
Yeah, because it's the government within the 128 belt that wants everything there, but they need to come out here to get it and.
Yep, because they're built out and they don't have the room.
And for them, for them, it's a double man. Because they they actually, I didn't realize this. I I thought that everything that Quabin took up was like just towns that disappeared, but I guess part of Oakham went away to the Quabin. And, uh, now they want to put this facility there within spitting distance of the water supply for Boston.
Luckily, we, I think we should be safe for a while because I know they try to target electric transmission lines. And we don't have any in town.
And the other thing, most of the solar facilities that would be utilizing onsite storage would be the smaller variety. Um, although, you know, if we did have a really big solar come in, they could put a bigger facility in with it. And then when they're together, I guess there's also some other special rules for that.
So up at Milbury, Auburn, that massive 10146, what's that? I mean, is that something that could be targeted because it's so massive?
What's that?
The solar farm, 146 on the southbound side. It's, uh, was Atlanta though?
Yeah.
And they keep expanding it. It's a massive thing.
Just, um.
Walmart, the supermarket.
Near the Walmart, north of Walmart.
Well, that's, that's in Worcester.
Is that Worcester?
That was always up there.
It's right before the, uh, the mall.
Yeah, that is Worcester, yeah.
That's always.
So I think basically it doesn't necessarily have to be close to the facility. There's a benefit to building it with the facility because then you're putting out power 24/7 from that new facility. But anywhere, think of it like, you know, it it is, it's a battery. You can charge it up wherever it is. So you put it anywhere away from all the people in Boston, right? And then, uh, all you have to do, you charge it up during the day, you just charge it at night. And it's, uh.
They talked about radiation emission or anything, or electric, uh, what's it called? When electric can affect your cancer rates?
Yeah, I don't know. I.
You know, if you live near a transmission line, you say.
Well, when they have cars parked into transmission lines and they just spontaneously catch on fire.
Oh, yeah.
Depending on your headlights now, they can light up too.
Wonderful.
Boy, you're just a.
The team down.
The cheering guy.
Um, there's, there's actually, from what, I did a little bit of research on it and there's actually like three different classifications of batteries. And there's many types of lithium batteries, but the ones that, um, are most common are the ones, the, um, the ones that are in all the electric cars, that style, the style that goes critical and overheats and kaboom.
I thought they were.
Technologies.
There are, there are. And there's supposedly some, um, systems that are hydrogen based that are getting up there in efficiency.
And then less volatile?
Yeah.
I thought that they were moving to phosphate. They weren't allowed to use the lithium anymore.
I think they're still.
And I think there's definitely them out there, but I think for new ones coming online, I thought that they were.
That's the, that's the other scary thing is they push and push these things and then they change things as they go along.
Yeah.
So they're pushing these things and then, you know, they're bypassing towns, but yet, oh, I thought it was this, now it's this, now it's that. And then they change every three months. It's like, you know, so again, that's, that's a state.
All right.
My gosh.
All right, minutes. We have two minutes. We have, uh, Wednesday, May 28th, 2025.
I wasn't there. You were.
Anyone get a chance to review these? This is. No, that was a Walla Street accessory apartment day.
Wish I could hand the garage, not hand the garage.
Is it highlighted for a certain re, was there a change on the back page?
Good question.
I don't know if that's.
It's a statement.
Yeah. I don't know if that's just a bold statement or.
I think so. What's 286 for?
It's the outside storage for pine.
Pine.
Oh, yeah. They're working down there.
Anyone see anything that jumps out? No.
So are we, are we taking Sleepy Hollow off of here or does that still need to be on our?
That still needs to be.
Still need, okay.
Yeah, I'm going to keep that on until the road is actually accepted.
Okay. The only reason I ask is that in the minutes, it says we should remove it from the agenda.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to wait until that's actually, you've got the paper working, accepted by the registry.
Yep, makes sense.
It's not over till.
Which is never.
This is your first meeting, John?
Oh.
The first thing was introduction. All right. Entertainer motion to accept the meeting of minutes for May 28th, 2025 as presented.
Some move.
Second.
May by Mr. Gnotik, second by Mr. Schlesman. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There's also June 11th.
All right, number one. Number one, third line down or so, the board record, the letter for Kent Frasier. Awarded or entered the letter for Kent Frasier?
Or received, yeah. Maybe, I don't know. Double check on that one.
Reviewed.
Reviewed.
I didn't see anything else. Rest of it looked okay to me.
Oh, there's one under seven, and this has to do with you. Mr. Charbonneau discussed CMPC delegate and said that the board must select some to be the delegate.
Someone, someone. Yeah, I missed that one.
Sorry.
You know, it's hard because your brain fills.
That same sentence, menders, men, uh, members.
Yep, members.
Discuss the changes.
God, I missed that one too.
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the meeting of minutes for June 11th, 2025 with the discussed changes. May by Mr. Schlesman, second by Mr. Gnotik, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that should, uh, that should do it for this meeting. Next meeting is September 10th. All right.
So I need signatures on the A and Rs and also the signature pages for the decision?
Yes. All right, and we are adjourned.